All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, could you determine if there's a form?
We have seven present and zero absent.
Excellent, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent, first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, I will entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the agenda as in, you can see in front of you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First item on the agenda are some recognition and awards, starting with Sedexo Food Service. Laurie Dooley is gonna do a little presentation for us.
Some similar presentation that we've had before, but first of all, thank you for putting me first on the agenda and for just giving me a few minutes here. If you notice on the front page, it says October 2000 to 2013. That's a time span that I've been here, been lucky enough to work in Faribault and I am moving on, so I wanted to take this opportunity to talk to the school board, 'cause I haven't told you directly, that I have accepted a position, the general manager of Sedexo at the Mayo Clinic in Rochester. So, I mentioned before that I, the last thing I did when I was down there, 1997 to 99, was the Gondas building groundbreaking, well, I think it's moved along since then. So, position presented itself, a big position, so I'll be working pretty hard and sliding on down there. But I just wanted to recap some of the things that we've done, assure you that with the onsite team and everything, we'll just continue as is and go forward and all that, and I just wanted to say thank you as well. So, kind of goes through this presentation that you've seen before. One of the biggest things that we're really proud of with this onsite team is the NSF audit, National Sanitation Foundation, where they do food and physical safety audit, about four hours. They do the kitchens, they use flashlights, they drill the employees on everything, with the correct food temperature, the physical safety, do we have all our documentation? And this onsite team has not missed a point in 2,900 possible points, and I think if Greg read this, like, on the record? They, it's a truly great accomplishment. And that's also working with Kevin Hildebrand and his custodial team that takes care of our kitchens as far as if anything's broken, they're there right away. So, it's a great team effort for Faribault as well as Sedexo. Everybody's working together to make sure we have safe, productive kitchens. The summer food service, I had a fun time seeing the accomplishment of Anne Marie's STEAM program. See the kids come in, kind of nervous at first and a little bit excited and kind of everybody was going every which way, and to watch the progression of, you know, the manners, the communication skills that developed, it was a wonderful program, and I know that this team will take it even further next summer. We got some great comments, and again, our, the onsite food service team, Kathy, Judy, and Nancy are here today, but we've had Kathy Amberb help, we've had Jeannie, lots of help. Judy Wells has led our program for many years. It's been successful and it's gonna continue to grow, and we'll continue to work with Anne Marie on that program. ADC Salabar is Colleen's favorite, so I put this in here kind of for her. We're gonna continue to do programs like that, where we can teach kids about different fruits and vegetables that come along, things they may not try always, that we can put out there and do it for a few days at all the schools, elementary, middle, and high school. We also like to do the annual Dr. Seuss writing contest, gives us a chance to do something that's not really food-related and have the kids write some stories, and we can get some prizes as long as Kohl's continues to sell some of those nice stuffed animals there. But, you know, hundreds of stories come in to the kitchens, and it's fun for us to see what the kids like to write and reward and work with, in conjunction with the teachers on some skills that are not always about food. Exhibition cooking, farm to school, we like to utilize our regional support. Edina has some very fine chefs there that we can call up and set up some exhibition cooking at the high school, at the elementary schools. I think it's time to bring some back at the middle school as well. They do a great job, and it's fun to have the chefs talk to the students, you know, career opportunities, maybe they would like to get into food service, we're always looking for help. Student Wellness Fair at the high school, working with the wellness committee, we did it at the high school, and I think we're looking at the middle school this year. So, I know Kathy will be involved in that process as well. It was a fun way to get the students to see different aspects of a well-rounded program, physical activity, some new food items, so that was a fun activity. Just kind of flying through this, 'cause you've heard this before too. Working with the Secondary Transition Education Program, having the students work with us in the dishroom, we've done this for 28 years, I know that was something that I just mentioned for the first time at the end of last year. We've had tremendous success, having the students a job opportunity with us in the kitchen is really great for all of us. After-school snack program, last year we doubled our snacks, 28,000 snacks provided after school. I mean, along with the breakfast in the classroom for all the elementary schools, lunch program at all the schools, the after-school snack program is available at all of our schools as well. And I know we want to continue to look at other options, how can we grow that particular program as well. We've been doing so many things towards wellness, and so when HHFK, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, came along, we were already lined up pretty well. I mean, we took the flyers out well before that was the thing to do. We drastically cut sugar from the breakfast menu, we switched to whole grain before we were told that we had to. So, we've been doing things all along, and we will continue to follow what HHFK presents. I know the next thing they're looking at will be a challenge is the a la carte, the snack bars, concessions, all that, the extra stuff will be the next challenge, but we're waiting to see what the government, the final decision is. This year was breakfast, just a little bit of changes there, but not much, and continue on with the whole grain foods and the fruits and vegetables as well. Because of some of that, because of the price increase that was mandated, which I know not everybody agreed with, and in some of the whole grain foods, we have seen a little bit of a decline. The lunch participation, elementary went down about 2% average overall, the middle school went, dropped about a percentage point, and high school about 2%. That's not too bad, that's still pretty solid participation, but it does show that they did take a little bit of a hit. Breakfast changed a little bit more so in elementary, we changed our process and how we were delivering it, so we knew that would drop some, but we're working to add some popular menu items that meet all the requirements, and I think we'll increase that. But the middle and high school, we're really trying to increase it, I know that's one of the expectations this year. So, so far, middle school's increased it by 3%, and high school's also increased it by 2%. We'll just keep working on ways to increase it. And you know, I say "we" 'cause I still have a vested interest and I know everybody do well. The last page is kind of a thank you to my staff, to everybody here in the school district. Colleen Murstorf has been absolutely fantastic to work with on everything, she's been a tremendous support, encouragement out to the schools, out when we do the summer program, seeing what we're doing. It's been a true pleasure working with her. Todd, same thing, very supportive. And all of you on the school board, I appreciate all of your continued support. Thirteen years has flown by, but I think there's a tremendous amount of talent in the school district, and I think I have one of the finest teams I've ever worked with. If I could, I would take them all with me to the Mayo Clinic, but I don't think that that would be allowed.
It's a bit of your contract that prohibits that.
I don't think that that would be allowed, but it's just been a fantastic thirteen years. I appreciate everybody's support, I'm excited and nervous, but I know that they're gonna take what we've done so far and continue on forward, you know, working with Anne Marie and her programs, working with Colleen, what do they want to see, so that we're aligned with what the school district likes. So, Sedexo will continue on doing a fine job with food service, we've still got all the same players, it's just me moving on, and I just wanted to say thank you very much for your support and allowing me for, to work here for thirteen years, I appreciate it very much. So, all I wanted to say, thank you.
Well, thank you Laurie. The number of years without losing a point is really remarkable, I'm waiting for that day that we do lose a point, and how disappointed this district is gonna be. You've set a bar that sooner or later, somebody's gonna have to suffer through that, that bar that you've set, but that's phenomenal, and we thank you for all the hard work you've done and wish you very well on your new adventures.
Thank you.
Thank you Laurie.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Faribault's Sports Hall of Fame Recognition. Todd, did you?
I would just like to read something if I just could. This is regard to Faribault graduates, and last Friday evening, there were several formal Faribault High School coaches and athletes added to the Faribault Sports Hall of Fame. They were Rick Ross, Chad Wolf, Sarah Bolt, Ted Thompson, Greg?
Rorick?
Is that how you pronounce it? Rorick. And Carrie Fury, I hope I got those names correct. And we just wanted to congratulate them and recognize them as past Faribault High School and, well, Faribault Public School graduates for recognition, so that was a very nice honor last Friday night.
We have one of the honorees in the audience.
I know he doesn't want us to.
I really didn't know that you were gonna hear that.
Had people in front of him until they all left, and sort of seeing them out there. Congratulations Chad and all the other inductees.
Yeah.
That's the one honor. Excellent. Okay, next item on the agenda is the community comment time. This is the time for any members of the community to come forward and share any thoughts or concerns that they have about the district with the school board. So, please come forward at this time. When you come forward, please make sure to speak into the mic clearly, 'cause it's being closed captioned, and if you could state your name for the board, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Great. My name is Shelley Cole, I do not have a concern. I am here tonight to represent, I'm a member of the school board, the Board of Directors at the Cannon River STEM School. We had a visit in September by the Friends of Education, they came to speak to us regarding the levy, and a decision was made by our Board of Directors to draft a resolution in support of that levy, and I'd like to take just a minute to read that and then present it to the board. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Cannon River STEM School believes that all schools benefit when students have strong and adequately funded educational choices, and whereas the Board of Directors of the Cannon River STEM School believes that the Faribault Public Schools are an essential part of the fabric of educational choice in the Faribault area, and whereas the Board of Directors of the Cannon River STEM School believes that the Faribault Public Schools and the Cannon River STEM School should be strong and mutually supportive partners in educating the children of Faribault and surrounding area, and whereas the Board of Directors of the Cannon River STEM School believes that combining an additional $636 per student levy with the existing $465 for an additional ten years will provide the Faribault Public Schools with a measure of financial stability and allow them to maintain their important role in offering the children of Faribault choice and excellence in education. The Board of Directors of the Cannon River STEM School hereby issues this resolution supporting the proposed $1,101 per student ten-year levy for the support of the Faribault Public Schools, which will appear on the November 5th, 2013 ballot. Approved this 10th of October 2013 by the Board of Directors of the Cannon River STEM School and signed by Terry Menard, Jen Walls, Karen Petrow, Jane Jerk, Marilyn Bongers, and myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move along with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are not debatable, but any item on the consent agenda can be removed at the request of any board member. Are there any requests to do so at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, if you would please do a roll call.
I will vote aye. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Terry Robisho?
Aye.
Jason Engle?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, seven zero in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next on the agenda is curriculum. There was a meeting of the Curriculum Committee today, I was not able to be there, and Colleen was not able to be there as well. Tom, do you have anything you'd like to report from that meeting?
Well, the meeting today centered around the Riverbend Nature Center and the curriculum that they are helping us deliver. It was very informative, they highlighted several changes in several of the grade levels with an eye towards meeting the standards in science education. So, I found it very interesting, very informative. Their early grades are focusing on awareness, and as the kids move through the program, they're adding the knowledge components. It was a good meeting, very informative, but it was a...
Thank you. Tom, any questions for Tom about the meeting? All right, seeing none, we can move along with the agenda. Next on the agenda is policy, is there a policy committee report?
Well, I would...
Probably looking at you.
I guess I would prefer you to have these notes, they're very well done, so there's probably not a whole lot I can add. Todd just asked that I point out under the field trip policy that there could be some changes because we are going to enforce the policy as it's written in the schools, and maybe you want to speak to that, Todd?
Right now, we're determining some of the activity fees that we're charging, we want to make sure that they're okay to charge. If they impact academic pieces, then we're not supposed to be charging. They're just a gray area that we have right now in the curriculum that we want to make sure that we iron out. And as a policy reads, it's pretty clear on what you can and cannot charge for in curriculum, and so that's what we're gonna be doing, just so you have that in your back pocket. So that's the rationale for the, for the field trip policy.
The students do not have to pay, they shouldn't have to pay.
Right, or on a sliding scale of some sort. Yep.
You better explain that one more time.
For example, if we have a charge for a curricular item that is used in grading, we're not allowed to charge kids for anything, materials or whatever it ends up being.
So if they go on a field trip?
Field trip is kind of a gray area, so we've gotta check it out. I know that if it's part of their grading curriculum, we're not supposed to charge them. We can get resources from like the PTO and some of those other resources that can pay for, for the kids and support that, but we can't charge kids and parents directly for some of those pieces. So, we wanted to adopt the policy first, and then as a result of adopting the policy, now we can go ahead and start making sure that we're following the correct procedures within the classrooms. We don't want to charge for kids that they're not supposed to be charged for.
All right, so we have three policies in front of us, I'll just read off their titles. These are in front of us for first reading this evening, which means we will not be voting on them, but we can expect that we'll see them again next month for our second meeting, which then at that time, we'll be acting on them. So, between now and then, we should look them over, and if we have any questions, to bring those to Policy Committee as soon as possible. Those three policies at this time are Policy 610 for field trips, Policy 709 for student transportation safety policy, Policy 710 extracurricular transportation policy. Any questions on any of those at this time?
I looked over the transportation ones, and one of the things I was watching for is make sure that we didn't have people driving personal vehicles, taking people on trips, and I see that's pretty well spelled out, that that doesn't happen unless it's an emergency.
That's correct.
So, everybody that hauls somebody or transports somebody is insured, has a vehicle that's up to standards.
Yep, exactly, yep, it's pretty specific.
And the language that's being added is just clarifying like what an emergency is, situation would be if the staff were with students and they needed to transport, so I think it's helpful as clarifying that.
Yeah, we're gonna leave that piece in the policy too, that example, yep.
So, it should reduce our liability.
It should.
Exposure.
Yep, yep.
All right, any further questions on any of these policies at this time? Like I said, we'll see these again in one more month, and if you have any questions between now and then, please forward them on to the Policy Committee as soon as you can. Next up is the finance, part of our policy, or part of our agenda. Item 8A, Finance Committee Report, do we have a Finance Committee Report?
We have some agreements coming up that we need to vote on tonight. One of them, the Adult Basic Ed, we actually, as the Finance Committee, requested some more information, but we do need to go forward with this at this time because of, actually, it's already in place kind of thing, but we have more information coming to be reviewed by the Finance Committee, so we will keep you guys informed on that. Otherwise, there are straightforward agreements that need to be in place. So, pretty, pretty short meeting we had.
Excellent, thank you. So, we have a few items in front of us requiring action this evening. Item 8B1, the Joint Powers Agreement, Establishing a Distance Learning Program. Todd, do you want to say anything about this item?
I can't, it's pretty self-explanatory. These are just kids who have taken some online learning courses, and as a result, you get, if you have so many kids taking online learning courses, it makes sense to have a contract with the company, so in order for us to save a few dollars, we're just gonna have a contract with this particular online company, and then those kids would still be able to take those courses, we're just paying a lesser fee. So that's, that's all it is.
Is that eliminated? Any other contractors who'll offer online learning?
No, nope, nope, this is, yeah, it's not exclusive.
Any further questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Joint Powers Agreement, Establishing a Distance Learning Program?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is our Adult Basic Education Consortium Agreement with Triton, would you like to say any more about that? I'm curious what kind of information we're waiting for.
It's, well, it has been going on for a while, we wanted to get an agreement with the Adult Basic Education offerings that we have with Triton School District, a small school district to our east, and, and we are, we happen to be the fiscal agent for that whole piece, and I think Anne Marie, she'll probably do a better job of explaining it than I.
Good evening, yeah, hi. The Triton School District is a downstream provider for, of Faribault Adult Basic Education, so what that means is we just have a financial relationship, but we are accountable for all of their student data, records, all the testing, all of the, all of the reporting, and the amount of money that goes to Triton basically covers their cost for delivering services to the students that they have, the adults that enroll in their ABE and ESL, so Adult Basic Education and English as a Second Language programming.
I think the one thing that the Finance Committee wanted to see was when we started breaking it down to make sure that we weren't losing this, we weren't losing money on this deal, and we're pretty sure we are not, but we're going to make sure that we've got that, and we'll report that to the Finance Committee the next time around.
Yeah, we'll be working closely with the Community Education Director there.
Any further questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the Minnesota State Academy's Speech Language Supervision.
Again, I can, if you want me to explain, it's, it's just a contract that is required for us to provide 12 hours of speech service. Cheryl can certainly speak to that whole piece too for the MSAD.
Good evening. MSAD and MSAB have requested supervision of their speech language clinicians. They are not fully certified at this time, and so they need supervision for that initial, their initial year of service, and so this allows us to provide that supervision by one of our certified speech language pathologists to them for 12 hours per trimester as outlined in the state statute.
Thank you Cheryl. Any further questions on this item?
There's no money exchanged on this one?
Yes, they pay us an hourly rate for that, for that supervision time, so they're paying us. They hold all the contracts because the state mandates that, because they are a state academy, that they have to hold the contracts for these.
And we feel that we're not going to see any stress as a result of these contracts with the academies, correct? We're not gonna hire extra staff.
It's not going to impact, right, it's not going to impact student service time.
Plus, it's only a temporary.
It's only a temporary piece, right.
Any further questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, and those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have some reports, starting with the enrollment report. Last month, you may recall that we had some down numbers, it looks like through October those were confirmed, so that is something we'll have to keep a careful eye on and think about as we're budgeting for, for next year. Any questions on that? Next is our financial report. No report this evening, and next is our, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find where I need to go here. Next is our approval of gifts and donations, so I see them here, but they're not coming up either. Here we go, I have them in front of me now. So we have a number of gifts this evening to consider for approval. Those are the Lions Club of Faribault, a value of $650 for dictionaries for third-grade students at Jefferson, Lincoln, and Roosevelt Schools. Those who may not know, this is something the Lions have done for us for many years, and we appreciate their continued support. Teresa Tilson, one Armstrong flute valued at $500 for our middle school music program. The Lincoln PTA, an amount of $391.22 for the purchase of some recess equipment, and the Ball Foundation in the amount of $1,200 for the year of the reader program. As always, we are very thankful to all these members of our community who come forward to step up and help out our schools, and we thank them for their donations and their time given to the district. I will entertain a motion at this time to approve these gifts and donations.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. A few other reports this evening. Item number nine, Insurance Committee, there is no report this evening. Wellness Committee, there is no report this evening, community yet. Anne Marie Leland, do you have a report for us this evening?
I sure do. Just have two buckets of information to talk about. One, the Early Learning Path I scholarships have become available to Rice County, and I received the information on Sunday. Christine Gorman, our early childhood coordinator, already has five families signed up, so those families, low-income families, will be receiving tuition funding to go have their students, have their kids go to McKinley, early childhood programming. So that's terrific, we're already off the ground, taking advantage of that, and having families feel really good about being able to send their children to preschool and having that funded for them. The other bucket of information is South Central, our partnership continues to grow. I was asked to serve on the search team for the Vice President of both campuses. I feel that's a really nice partnership and outreach that South Central has done with Faribault Public Schools. And I just wanted to mention that... And I just wanted to mention that I did end up going on the tour with South Central to the Bosch facility in Owatonna. Bosch has recently acquired SPX in Owatonna. What I'm talking about, but Bosch is this huge manufacturer, of course, of car parts and other items. And it was a fascinating tour. The results are going to just sharpen our focus in terms of being able to have that relationship around manufacturing and technology and that advancement of the courses that we can offer, both at Faribault Public Schools in joint partnership with South Central, is just really exciting. So, Bosch is signed on very, much so, with South Central, and we will just be benefiting from that greatly. So, that's, I'm just reporting positive things.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we are now on to other matters. Starting to approve a resolution for the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Application for Grant for Student Participation. So, this is a application that we put in to allow for monies to help support our programs and our students to participate. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution for Minnesota State High School League Foundation Application for Grant for Student Participation. This is a resolution, so it requires a roll call. So, Mr. Clark, if you will please do a roll call on item ten A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll vote aye. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jay Raldechow?
Aye.
Jason Inbred?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, seven, zero in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next item, item ten B, Approve to Schedule a Special Board Meeting to Adopt Resolution Canvassing Results for, of the special election. We need to do that sometime between eleven-eight thirteen and eleven-fifteen thirteen. The date of November twelfth, which is a Tuesday, if I'm correct. We cannot meet on November eleventh, it's a holiday, right?
Yes.
So, the suggestion has been made to do November twelfth, and then to also combine that with a, with a work session, which is the next item. So, that is the, that is the item in front of us. That is the suggestion for a date. Any discussion on this item? To clarify what the canvassing is, we need to certify the results of the election that, that's coming next Tuesday, and we need to do it with, between a specific timeframe labeled here, so. Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the scheduling of a Special Board Meeting to adopt Resolution Canvassing Results of the Special Election to November twelfth at five-thirty PM. Yeah, I didn't say the time. Is that clarified, is that the mo, the maker of the motion, I can't remember who that is. Are they okay with that as a time?
Aye.
Okay, so, Tom clarifies that as the time, five-thirty for our typical work session time for this Special Board Meeting. All right, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. In light of this new meeting, it was suggested that perhaps we want to move the, the work session to that date as well. And so, I will entertain a motion to approve to reschedule the November fourth work session, twenty thirteen work session, to Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty thirteen, both at the District Office, the same date as the, to, to follow the Special Board Meeting. You do the Special Board Meeting first and follow it with, with the work session. Any discussion on that item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item ten D is to approve the Rescheduling of a Policy Committee Meeting, which was scheduled to take place November twelfth to a later date, so it does not conflict with the previously said meeting, so that new date would be November nineteenth, excuse me, November nineteenth, twenty thirteen, at four-thirty PM in the District Office for the next Policy Committee Meeting. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Other items of information, Student Representative. It's my understanding that we do have a student representative, but she's not able to be with us this evening because of
She's in a deck-up contest, yep.
Typical student busy schedules, and so hopefully she will be joining us for our meetings before too long. So, that moves on to School Board Members. Any items of information?
Well, I guess, just when Amory was speaking about Community Ed, I attended the manufacturing event that the Faribault Chamber sponsors really celebrates Faribault manufacturing. And I would just say that people spoke very highly of Todd and Amory's work with the college. The new president, Dr. Parker, spoke very highly of our district and the work that we're doing to improve our vocational participation. There was a big tour of senior high students going to the
One of the, either Mercury or?
Mercury.
Yep.
That afternoon, and he was very excited about that. And, you know, I just would reiterate that an important part of that, in my mind, is, you know, helping the service learning option for students, and they were just very supportive of our effort in doing that. It was a great event to attend. And then I would just also, Howard, maybe you could speak to the Fair Conference or Jason, that was a great event as well.
Yeah, I'll mention the, the Fair Conference, and you're welcome to chime in as well, Howard. There was a Fair Conference, which now I have to remember what it stands for. Faribault
Alliance, I can't remember exactly.
It's a, it's a, it's a group of people working hard to address the diversity in our community and move forward in positive ways, recognizing our diversity and, and finding positive ways to meet the challenges that that brings. And I think we had a tremendous meeting. I have to say how impressed I was, and this is a little bit of a pat on the back for my institution of St. Olaf. It was run by a, a group of St. Olaf students, this meeting, and, and I think they did a fantastic job. And I think at my table, certainly, I felt like there was a really positive discussion, and some great ideas came forward that I think have, have a chance of becoming solid foundations for, for programs in this community. And, and my, my, what I heard from other tables was really similar statements of a, of a really positive meeting, and, and there must have been fifty, forty, fifty people there.
Actually, I think there ended up being about sixty-five.
Sixty-five people there, so it was, it was a well-attended meeting, you know, in the middle of a workday, we will get a really good number of people there. A good number of people from, uh, recent immigrants to our community were able to be there and represent those communities as well. And I, I thought it was an excellent meeting, and I'm excited to see the work that Fair, Fair is doing.
And I just, before Howard chimes in here, I want to make sure I get the, the term correct. It's a Faribault Alliance for Inclusion, Resourcefulness, and equi, I'm sorry, and Equality.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Todd.
Oh, I learned a few new Somali words, but go ahead and ask me to say them right now. I did, I did learn Salam anyway, as a way of saying hello, and learned how to say "how are you" too, but I don't remember it. I'll have to look at my notes. But that does bring to mind a point that I thought about that day, and that is, I think it would be well to be, for our district, maybe Community Ed, to offer some classes in learning both Spanish and Somali, just a conversational language, because both groups at the table I was at talked about how welcoming it is or important it is when they hear you make an attempt to speak their language to them. And I think it kind of opens doors. The concern I have for the conference is, I think, wasn't this St. Olaf's last time they're going to organize it? And now, if we're going to meet again, it has to be organized by some of the leadership that evolves out of that group?
That's the intent, and I think that Faribault will, or Faribault, I'm sorry, the St. Olaf will work through or with us for that partnership. They had, they, they helped run the spring conference, and this is more of a follow-up and turning it into an action item conference. So, based on their research, we're going to, we're going to dissect the research and, and then hopefully with the leadership within the community, we'll come up with some sort of action plan.
Yeah, I think to keep getting this group together and others who want to join it is a real important step in building relations in this community between the cultures, among the cultures.
Excellent, thank you, Howard. Other items?
I was fortunate enough to have a conversation with several high school staff members who reported to me on the Mercury tour.
Oh, yeah.
As well as Faribault's participation in a Target Corporation program. Faribault, apparently, according to the information I was given, is the first outstate school to be invited or allowed to participate in, in that corporate program. And the report was that our students were very interested and interesting. They did a, did a great job representing the community well, but it was a wonderful opportunity. So, it was great to hear about our students going out in the community and, and finding out more about the world of work.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I passed around, I think it was that time of the year, for the Superintendent Performance Evaluation. And Todd was hoping to have this done by, in October, so we're still in October. But we're going to take a little different format this year than we did last year. This is a evaluation form that Todd has researched, and after reviewing it, it looks very comprehensive, and I think it addresses what we're all about in our district, as well as what we would expect as far as the standards for Todd's performance. What I'm asking you to do is to fill this out. It is a week, enough time for you to complete it.
Can I just interject too? You can actually do this online, and the, the numbers or the values will actually, as you put the X in each of the marks, it'll actually go up for you and do all that addition for you, so you can have the online addition too, if you'd like.
If you can send us the link, that would be helpful.
Is there something Kathy can organize for us to get us these links? So, we'll try to do that within the week first.
All right, within the week, send it. What will happen is I will tabulate the results. I will meet with three of us that worked on this last year, Jason, Tom, and myself. We'll meet with Todd to review it, and then we will have a closed session, at which time we will then review it with the whole board, as a discussion of what we're at. The process there is we go into a closed session, we discuss the evaluation, and come back and, and have a, an action item on approving the performance review. So, we'll probably have that sometime in November. All right, Kathy, you'll get us the link for that then, please. Thank you. With the results being forwarded to me, if you can do that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other items of information?
Just one comment, just make sure you save it first before you send it back to Kathy. So, when you pop it up and you fill the numbers out, just remember it's not, you have to save it first, and then you have to reattach it, and then send it to Kathy. So, if you send it right back, it won't, you'll, you'll lose all the data. So, make sure you save it first before you send it.
That's all be in there, right?
Yep.
Be all.
Yep. Yeah, so you may want to, yeah, just save it right away, so you don't lose it. I don't want you to go through the whole thing and then get mad and then have to redo my evaluation. That's not a good thing.
I mean, don't do your evaluation angry.
Watch my favorite TV show first, and then I'll
There you go, yep. Full stomach.
All right, items, any other items of information from School Board Members? All right, hearing none. Mr. Superintendent, any items of information?
Yeah, I just want to, just wish Ruth Ann Collins's son in speedy recovery. Most of you have heard what happened over there with him, with he being in the service. He's, I believe he's still over on the East Coast now in, in the hospital, so we're wishing him well and, and Ruth Ann and that family well. The Fair Conference, you guys have already mentioned. I'm looking forward to the research now that the St. Olaf students are putting together, and we'll get a copy to all of you as soon as that is all finished up. The, there was a bike rodeo last week that I volunteered my time for a little while. That was, that was very good. I saw Jason there and I saw Yvette there. I don't know if anybody else is there. It was a little chilly that morning, but it was, it was fun.
It's a chilly morning.
Yep, it was, the bike rodeo is where the mainly elementary kids go around. There's a place where they can service their bikes, and then they get a helmet all fitted, and they go through a course to practice safety and bike, basic bike safety for kids so they can ride safely.
Who are the organizers of that?
Uh, I think, was that Shelley Cole and Kath?
Shaq.
Shaq. Becky Ford, yes, Becky Ford.
The Faribault Flyers don't have their time to buy.
I think Becky, Becky never did quite a bit to do it.
Becky did too, yeah. A lot of people involved.
Community Ed did a lot, yeah.
Yep. So, it was good. It was a nice event.
It was a great, great event, yeah.
Still keeping our PDS relationship, that's our Professional Development Schools relationship in Mankato. It's a great group. It's about, it's seven schools over by the Mankato area, where we talk about new and innovative, cutting-edge educational ideas. That's where the avid came from and the co-teaching model and some of these other good ideas. So, we continue to meet on a monthly basis. And I did enjoy the manufacturing luncheon. That was a lot of fun. Dr. Parker and I, we've been teaming together now for a few months now, and I'm really looking forward to our future. The Bosch Corporation, as Amory talked about, was a huge hurdle to get over, and that was, that's going to be a, a nice relationship. We're going to find out by having that organization on our, on our side, so. A lot of good things happening. It's, we, we haven't been able to articulate it yet, but eventually we'll get it down to a point where we'll bring it to the Curriculum Committee, and we'll talk about that, and we'll be able to explain a lot of these different details to the School Board once we get things in place.
Bottom line though, is the UC is offering more classes in preparation for some of these manufacturing jobs at the high school level?
We do, and we'd like to see that transition from, you know, we, we call a lot of these courses still auto mechanics, welding, which would still be a part of it, but we, we'd like to even move forward and change the terminology to engineering, manufacturing, and technology, and start changing the whole face of what vocational ed is and moving it into that 21st century. And then also collaborating with South Central College, so these kids can get some college credit. And the other thing that is so important is getting some of these certifications early for these kids, so they can transition right into some of the college programs. So, there's a lot of good, exciting things going. We just have to get down to the nuts and bolts and start nailing down some of the curriculum.
That means certification for the teachers as well?
Not so much for the teachers. These would be for the students. So, for example, we already give a native certification for auto mechanics. There's a torque certification that it's very high level, and there's a methodology of how those kids can get there. We would have somebody like Mark Lesman teaching the kids in this, and then once they graduate, they'd, they'd have that certification, and right out of school, they'd be eligible for a decent job. It kind of, it's kind of a long one, but the track would probably be an engineering track, so we'd track them so that we'd get some of those certifications, and if they they build on each other, so then they would be open for a two-year program. And then, then South Central College is building upon that, so then those kids can either get a job there or build on their engineering experience and go to a four-year program. So, that's just one example.
Excellent, thank you, Todd. Okay, with that, we'll finish up with some dates to remember. Of course, very important to remember, next Tuesday, November fifth, twenty thousand, two thousand thirteen, is the special election. To remind all those to please go out, everyone in the community, to please go out and vote. The polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. And there are two polling places at Faribault High School and Nur Strand, and if you're not sure which one to go to, the district website has that information, as well as you should have received it. Everyone in the community should have received a mailer telling them about that and describing what the item will look like that we are voting on. Item twelve B, November twelfth at five-thirty PM, work session at the District Office. November eighteenth at seven-thirty AM will be our Finance Committee, again, at the District Office. November nineteenth at four-thirty PM will be our Policy Committee Meeting at the District Office. And November twenty-fifth at six-thirty PM And November 25th at 6:30 PM, our next regular board meeting. We'll be right back here in City Hall Council Chambers. And with that, I will entertain-
Can I ask you a question?
Please do.
Any dates for the MSBA convention?
In January. I, I'll have to send that to you. It's-
I might have it right here.
We don't, when do we have to sign up for it?
Anytime. You can give me your information.
Let you know that.
Right.
January's, 15th is Wednesday. That's the early bird session. And I've gone to that, I think Richard's gone to that a couple times. 16th is Thursday, and 17th is Friday. So, evening of the 15th, all day to 16th, and the morning of the 17th of January.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.